Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll start off with the pledge and the prayer. Do I have a council person I meant to ask you back there? Who wants to lead the prayer?
I can lead the prayer. Give everybody by the head if you'd like to. In the name of God, the most gracious, most merciful, we come to you today asking you to guide this city council and protect all our cities, citizens, and our workers. Lord, please guide us as we go over the liberations of the city business today and make sure we do everything right and in order. All that you ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let me apologize. The prayer was led by Mayor Pro Tem Michael D. Balls. And you know who I am. I'm Brenda. I'm sorry, Mayor Brenda Moore. I'm sorry. Forgot. I'd like to say good evening again.
Good evening.
And this is a public meeting. And the audience is to ask to remain and be quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, and otherwise disrupting the meetings. Just a friendly reminder, all city council, everybody on the platform, those phones need to be on silent, please. Audience, I need your phones on silent. I still need a phone. So please, don't let that phone go off. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
And Pro Tem Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Councilmember Flores is excused. Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have eight members present and one absent. You have a quorum.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
I do have a couple announcements, Mayor. Thank you. I want to remind everyone that your yard waste is collected on your regular trash day, and you must use separate yard waste containers. And if you need a sticker or a yard waste sticker, they're available in the city clerk's office during regular business hours. Also, the city waste convenience station is open the second Saturday of the month from 8:00 a.m. until noon. And city residents who wish to dispose of large bulky materials are encouraged to utilize this service. Items that can be dropped off include recyclables, building materials, furniture, trash, et cetera. The station will be open this Saturday, May 14. And Mayor, we have a proclamation out on our agenda as declaring May 9 through the 13th of 2022 as Public Service Recognition Week.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The proclamation will be read by a council person. Autumn Scherzer. Oh, I need for, because it is, I don't know if all five unions are here, but if you'd like to come to the podium, your president, your vice president, however, if you would like to come up to the podium.
City of Saginaw proclamation. Whereas Americans are served every day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels who supply continuity to our democratic society, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas public employees serve in areas such as public safety, elections, human resources, finance, and budget, environment, public infrastructure, community services, human rights, recreation, and more. And whereas the public employees of the city of Saginaw are committed to exhibiting the highest standards of professional excellence, creativity, skill, and customer service. And whereas the dedicated citizens who serve on City of Saginaw boards and commissions are integral to the advancement of the quality of life that we enjoy here. And whereas the efficiency of government relies on public employees who provide services in the quality and quantity required and expected by the public. Without these public employees at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And whereas the city of Saginaw recognizes the generous contributions of time and talent by public employees and community volunteers and the importance of the services they render. And whereas though the work and efforts of public servants are specially recognized this week, the city of Saginaw remains grateful each and every day. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, mayor of the city of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim May 9 through the 13th, 2022, as Public Service Recognition Week in the city of Saginaw and urge all citizens to recognize and express their appreciation for the important contributions of public employees and community volunteers through the city, county, state, and nation. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this ninth day of May in the year of our Lord, 2022. Signed, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor, City of Saginaw, councilpersons Michael D. Balls, Mayor Pro Tem, Annie Bench, George Copeland Jr., Michael Flores, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Ostache, Autumn L. Scherzer, and Reggie Williams II. Also by Timothy Morales, the city manager.
All of you could just come, and then we'll handle.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I shake. Alrighty, alrighty.
Appreciate your work.
In my mind, I was like, continuity. And then I went, continuity.
Okay, don't sit down yet. Don't sit down yet. Excuse me. Excuse me. We're sometimes said that we don't tell you how we appreciate you. So we really want you to know that we do appreciate you. You know, and if I had a million dollars, I would probably be broke giving it to you. However, the best I can give you is a piece of paper. So if one of you would like, if each one of you would like to say a few words, feel free. You know what?
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
You're so welcome. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are at public input.
I'd like to welcome all of those who have signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slowly and clearly so that we don't miss what you're saying. When you're asked to come up to the podium by the clerk, you will have three minutes limit, which will be tied by the clerk. Be sure you cover your main point. Remember to be courteous, respectful to the members of the public and to the viewers on SGTV and to the council so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
First on our list is Ahmed Keels. Ahmed Keels. Okay, let's go to Audrey Gibson. Let's try Sierra Jones. That's strike three. How about Gary Beckert? Gary is here.
Good evening, council, city manager. First off, I'd like to thank Councilman Ohtash and Flores, who isn't here, and city manager and Darren Jerome on some problems with 1203 Stevens on cleaning it up. I appreciate that. But I'm here at Land Bank Lot at 1122 Stevens. The resident at 1112 Stevens last fall apparently tore a shed down and just flipped the roof off over into the land bank lot and then took all the leaves from the whole block and blew them in there, which, so all winter we had a problem with leaves blowing across into our driveway, which gets kind of annoying. I got a backhoe, I piled, put a pile of snow at the end of the fence. I didn't solve that until it melted until one day the resident called the city police and they threatened to take me to jail for dumping snow between the curb and sidewalk. But I think that's a different problem for a different time. But anyhow, we've called the land bank three weeks ago. Actually, I didn't call them. I sent an email. I think the city manager and the inspection's got a copy of it, request and permission to go over and clean it up and drag. I thought it was pallets before I realized it was a roof. To drag it out the road and either have the city pick it up so they can just stop at the curb and make it quick and convenient and clean all the leaves up and just put them out with my trash. As of yet, the land bank has refused to even get back with me. You know, we've also put in a request to buy a lot at 821 Stevens, or 821 bond, which is on the other side, which the same resident was dumping on and she blamed the neighbor next to her because now, when she found out I already put in, put a request in to buy it after seven years of her using it and no interest. Now she wants to buy both of them. But if you're using them without permission or dumping on them, you're not eligible to buy them from the land bank. And so also, if you're behind on your taxes, they haven't paid their trash tax, which apparently the land bank only cares about taxes owed to the county, not the city. Which it seems if you owe any taxes, you know, if you can't pay your $220 or $30 trash tax, are you paying $350 for two lots? Is my line of thinking anyhow. But it's like you say, I really appreciate what you guys have been doing to help us on that. But the land bank's really failing on us, you know? I mean, when you offer to clean it up and, and I know it's talking with some friends in Heritage Square, they're having problems over there with the land bank, too. You know, and I've got a bit of vested interest. Our family's operated a business in town here since 1920. We got a little vested interest in the city in keeping it nice. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Next on our list is Ed Connolly. See him? Let's go to Felicia Hogan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Madam Moore, Pro Tem Mayor Michael Balls, and city manager Tim Morales, my name is Felicia Hogan. I'm here to address a matter of sidewalks being broken and damaged from a city tree and the removal of a tree on private property. I just want to share the letter that was written to refresh your memory when I was here the first time. I'd also like to say in the beginning that the notice from the engineering department disclosed a telephone number that was not accurate for the Michigan Tax Tribunal, of which I've gotten a negative response back from them. So I'd like to begin with the letter that was written regarding 15 sidewalks damaged full width of the property of 55 feet across due to a grown tree on city property known now as 2022 Single Lot Special Assessment. As owners of 3419 Robert Street, Saginaw, Michigan, since September 2011, that's 11 years, and have been paying over the years for the removal of city tree roots growing into the dwelling's drainage system and also cracking and breaking the sidewalks across the width of the property. We've never received any compensation for this problem and we never requested for any compensation. So, over an 11-year span, the apron of the driveway is raised up from pretty high.
I never thought I'd do this, but I motioned to give her 45 more seconds.
There's a motion on the floor. I need a second.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Just one minute, Ms. Hogan.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so 13 sidewalks are all broken and cracked, 55 feet across the width of the property. The city has cut down a full-grown tree on private property located on the side of the dwelling, providing shade from the sun. And the tree is 50 feet from the street. The city of Saginaw cut every branch off a beautiful tree and left the tree trunk erect. I did go back recently only to find that the tree had been.
Your time has expired.
Grounded. May I please have, may I please continue?
Your time has expired. It was extended once.
You could only have it extended, Ms. Hogan, one time. And he extended for 45 seconds. That's why I say in the beginning, let's try to get everything in that you want us to hear.
Yeah, well, three minutes is, I understand, Mayor. But sometimes there are issues that you can't condense in a three-minute period. This is a matter that I've brought before the council once before, I believe in March. And it's our request to have the.
I'm sorry, Mayor, her time is expired.
All right.
Okay.
Please consider my consideration on that.
We will.
Property assessment.
We will.
Next speaker on the list is Courtney Smothers.
Hello. I would first like to start with, I have 13 copies of the topic that I'd like to discuss today, which would be the non-owner occupied dwelling fee. Who do I have next?
Yeah, I would have needed those prior to the meeting, but thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of City Hall. My name is Courtney Smothers. Today, I'd like to briefly discuss the non-owner occupied dwelling late charge, unprecedented late charge amount of 100% of the initial fee. Not one business, court, or even banking institute has 100% late fee. This is very much plain, over-the-top. Some changes need to be made. And I would like the matter reviewed, revised, and rendered to a reasonable fee. This is very discouraging for homeowners. The things we have to put up with the city of Saginaw, I want to encourage the youth to purchase homes and have stability in their life because of opportunities here for upstarts to be more easier than other places. I now second that. And because of some of these issues, I'm looking to invest in other prominent investments without so many hidden fees. I do take responsibility of having a late fee myself. I feel for homeowners, young, old, and disabled with the threat of losing their house left and right from the city of Saginaw. Personally, it's damaging and it's discouraging. The city is this building, but the city are the homeowners also. We make up a lot of percent of the city. A city that doesn't have much but a few houses. We don't make a lot off these houses. Like I said, the point of this matter is we need 100% of initial late fees knocked down to some reasonable. I never in life seen 100% of an initial late fee, which I take responsibility of having one myself. People are not fortunate and blessed enough to jump up and spend $1,100 at the drop of a dime. I didn't want to have to be the one to come up here and talk. But my money is involved now, so I have to say something. That's pretty much it. Yeah, and it's a lot of money because I have multiple properties. So, how do we go about getting this situation back on the ballot to be pushed forward? Do I have to encourage more homeowners to come in? Just somebody let me know what I have to do. Because I don't want to come down here and pay a charge that was once $150 to turn to $1,100.
You will get a response if you haven't already. You will get a response.
I paid the fee, so now.
But you'll still get a response because you came in front of us. Okay?
Okay, what do I look for that at?
It'll come through the mail if we've got your address and stuff.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next on our list is Yvette Morris. Yvette Morris. Final on our list is Tyrone Damon. Tyrone Damon. Well, Mayor, that takes us to remarks to council.
Okay. We were, council persons, you have three minutes as well. We will begin tonight with Councilman Copeland.
A very good evening, everyone. Happy belated Mother's Day to all of our mothers here. I hope you all had a great day of celebration. Those who, I'm just thankful for mothers. Just the natural-born nurturers, it's a gift. So I'm thankful for our mothers. I do want to say, I don't want to know to say congratulations or thank you to Officers Brad Hope, Roger Pape, Casey Stabler, Brandon Jebb, and Jordan Bailey, along with MSP Trooper Roy and Saginaw Fire Department Battalion Chief Jim Foreman. On, I was reading an article that just popped up on my Facebook page about them, a situation about a 50-year-old resident on a bridge and how they worked together to save that resident's life. And I think that has to be, well, we did it today with this recognition, but I definitely wanted to make sure to mention that because that was amazing to read. One, I enjoy watching the show Fire. It's on TV. That's one of my favorite shows, Chicago Fire, Chicago PD, and all that. But just to see that here in our community, how hard they're working. Thank you all for saving that resident's life. I also want to share that there is, Saginaw CAC is giving away babies diapers and pull-ups up until 14, every Monday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. So if you're a Saginaw resident and diapers are expensive, I'm buying them for two. So, I don't know if there's a price because I may be riding up myself, but for Saginaw residents, if you do need diapers and pull-ups and wipes and rash cream, stop by Saginaw CAC on Mondays from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And great job to the Cinco de Mayo Parade Celebration Committee. I had a chance to help out in the beginning and getting the parade set up. And it was just amazing just to see the love, the celebration. They had worship. It was just amazing. And I just loved to see the happiness in the city. So looking forward to the next party that we're having in the city. But that's all I have for you. Have a great day. And I hope we can get out early just to enjoy some more of this weather. That's all.
Next, we have councilperson Sylvia.
Good evening, how's everyone? So glad to see your sunshiny faces. And I'd also like to commend the persons that were responsible for the Cinco de Mayo. Of course, I was in that parade. And there was a really big, giant, giant, awesome part of that parade. If you missed it, can't tell you about it. Anyway, it was awesome. It was awesome. Also, the health formation for you on yesterday evening, there, persons put on a beautiful, beautiful health information fundraiser last night. Myself, a couple other councilpersons were there. It was beautiful. They gave away a $1,000 scholarship. And this promotes awareness in regards to sickle cell anemia. If you're not informed about that, look it up. It's awesome, a $1,000 scholarship for a young person to complete, attend college. Also, CAC, I did want to kind of get on back of that. Those diapers are up to size four and it's only on Monday, only on Monday. And it's been a success. And please utilize what our city has. That's really awesome. So that's all I have to say. And happy belated Mother's Day to all the mothers, soon-to-be mothers. No, I'm just playing. Have a great day. And shout out to our public servants. Oh, oh, one more thing. I'm sorry, streets. Whatever, whatever, I might be missing something. But just like I get calls about, well, Monique, they need this. The trash is here and there. I also got calls in regards to, Monique, they got that up so quick. They came and did this. So shout out to you guys. I know we can't do everything in a matter of a few days, but shout out, shout out to streets and whomever helps in those particular areas. So things are going. We need people. The city of Saginaw is yet hiring. So come on and join the team. Have a lovely day.
Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I'll keep this short. First, thank you to our speakers that did show up. I appreciate your voice tonight. I would also like to give a huge shout out to Detective Graves, who is Saginaw Police Officer of the Year. So congratulations, sir. I would also like to say that I had a nice experience this weekend at the Indigo Club, which is down, I believe, South Water, I believe is the street. And that was my first time being inside. And it was, it was very nice. And what I would like to do is encourage people to go to the Indigo Club because it is a place to go. But I would like to encourage people my age to go. I don't have anything against young folk, but hey, I want to be able to enjoy my time while I'm there. But it was a nice time. It's a beautiful establishment. And I think it's one of those businesses that deserves to be supported in Saginaw. So with that being, oh, and happy belated Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. But that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have councilperson Bench.
Let's double-check it. It's me. It's me now. Sorry. Well, good evening to everybody. And I, too, will be brief. But I do want to thank our public speakers who are here tonight. Mr. Beckert, before the meeting, I didn't have an opportunity to come tell you directly, but the land bank manager responded one address you're concerned about that's owned by them. And they will be addressing it as soon as they have an opportunity tomorrow. You can tell him, right? Thank you. I don't want to repeat myself, but that should be dealt with. He did respond back before the meeting. And I, too, just want to add my praise to my colleagues that mentioned the Cinco de Mayo Festival and Parade. It was a wonderful event. Very well done and very, very welcome activity after the two-year hiatus. I just want to say thank you to them for, people always say there aren't things for people to do in Saginaw, but I think there are a lot more than people realize. And we need to be grateful for those things because I think we're fortunate to have many of the amenities that we do, especially events like that. So that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have councilperson Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to say I know continuity. I just couldn't process it. So what my head was saying and what I wanted to say were not matching. So I want to clarify that. I, too, want to thank the public speakers, but especially our public servants. I will and forever will be a champion for our police, our fire, and our unions and everybody else that is in public service. Because we have Battalion Chief Foreman, who served the city for 25 years. We have officers. Uh, we have, uh, Officer Frazier as, uh, Police Officer of the Month. Chief Ruth, twenty-eight years of service with the Saginaw Police Department. Uh, we've lost, uh, Brad Tony Melcher, who served twenty-eight years, shot in the line of duty and came back to be an officer in the Police Department. Detective Graves, you're the Officer of the Year. Uh, so, we don't take, uh, what you do for granted, and just know, especially from myself, but I'm sure from my colleagues, as you know already, sometimes it's a thankless job, but at the end of the day, you know what's, what it's worth, and you're going home and difference in all of the cities. Your lives, the people you work with, who you interact with, and definitely for our citizens, so thank you is, just doesn't seem enough, but for now, that's the best I can give you for now. Uh, reminder that roll call, uh, is May twenty-fourth from, at six P.M. at Mackinac Place, so please come out, they are still looking for sites, so if you are interested in hosting, I'm sure, reach out to the chief, or he'll connect you with the right person to get that set up. And then, uh, in the, I want to say happy Mother's Day as well to everyone. I'm not a mother, but I have some figures and women that have been very influential in my life, so, uh, hats off to anyone that's a mom, whether biologically or adopted. Uh, and then last but not least, please, I encourage everyone, as it gets warm out, um, the city was on fire this weekend, not burning, but in other ways, and, I mean, I could hear them from my house, and I just couldn't believe the fact that it sounded like a war zone. Um, grab somebody and bring them in and mentor them, guide them in the right path, because the amount of violence that is happening needs to stop, and it's only going to get worse if we allow it to get worse. So our community, we need to step up, and we need to make changes or provide a different option. And then also, please some, support small businesses, especially the ones right in our city. Uh, go buy an ice cream cone, take somebody out to eat, uh, we have a lot of great food vendors here in the city, so I definitely want to just encourage everyone to remember your small businesses. We want to keep them here. That is all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman, Council, Councilman. Oh, God, I stashed, I'm sorry.
I'll help you, Mayor. Hey, uh, well-
I abstained last week, the last meeting.
So, yeah, she's right, I, uh, was absent at the last meeting, I was recovering from an illness, uh, but welcome, everybody, it's good to see our chamber, uh, was full once again, and to everybody who's watching at home, thank you to our public speakers for coming out and sharing your thoughts with the council. Um, I'm just going to reiterate everything that my colleagues are saying right now. Officer Graves, congratulations to you, congratulations to the help that everybody did for the woman on the bridge, because she is now getting the, the help that she desperately needs. Um, yeah, and thank you for everybody, the Cinco de Mayo Parade, I had a great time, um, was a good event, it was a huge parade, I got a lot of sun, uh, got a little sunburned even with sunscreen on, but, um, it was excellent, a great time. Councilman Reggie Williams, the Indigo Club, uh, if you did not know, it's a local historic district, it's a single entity, and it's protect, protected under our ordinance, so that's, uh, I'm glad you enjoyed that. Um, let me see here. Uh, people that are picking up trash, I've been telling, I've been getting some calls and people wanting to clean up their neighborhoods, so if you're listening right now, what I've been telling them is call the city manager's office, if you put your trash out to the road, uh, the manager has assured us that they will come and pick up all the bags and stuff that you are collecting. Uh, also too, uh, one of the things that now that the warm weather is here, it's been kind of nice in our neighborhood, uh, we've adopted a park, and so we've been taking care of the park and getting more sun out there doing that, but it's a lot of fun, and one thing that I did notice is that once we start, started, uh, working in the park, it kind of brought all of the neighbors out, and so we can kind of now do it collectively, so I got a chance to actually meet all my neighbors for a couple of blocks, so it's just, uh, been a lot of fun and a good experience for us all. Those forms are available on the city website, and you can also get them for, call the clerk's office, if you can find it, they can help you find that form. And speaking of trash, we talked about the land bank tonight too, and some of the work they've done, um, or trying to do. I'm glad that you came and spoke to us tonight, Mr. Becker, because I have had some other calls come in from Twelfth Street, and it was just a phone call to Tom Miller Senior, and he was able to get that taken care of the next day, so I am one hundred percent confident that with Councilwoman Bench's remarks tonight, that that will be addressed for you as well. Also, the children's zoo is open now again, I meant to talk about that at the last meeting, they're open from ten to five until the beginning of October, admission is five dollars, and it's one dollar per person per ride. Uh, infants that are eleven months and younger are free to the park. And there is a big event coming up this weekend, it's going to be held at the Saginaw Club. Potter Street Station is doing a big fundraiser, it's called Raise the Roof, they've got information on their Facebook page, and there's also links on their Facebook page where to buy tickets. Tickets are available at the Antique Warehouse, they're also available at Dawn of a New Day, and they did get up a link to buy tickets online. Uh, tickets are thirty dollars, and the event is going to go from eight.
I'd like to motion to give, uh, Councilman, I stashed one minute.
That's out of order. The only one, due to our charter, the only ones that can ask, we can ask for the public speakers, not for us.
Mayor, it's council rules of order.
Council rules of order.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
Visit the Facebook page. Or mine, thank you.
Next, we have Mayor Pro Ten Balls.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to, uh, welcome everybody here to the city council meeting today, and I want to thank you for living in the City of Saginaw, working in the City of Saginaw, and trading in the City of Saginaw, I did thank you all for that. This week was a big weekend here in the City of Saginaw. Um, I did to attend the, uh, Health Formation, uh, concert that Mr. Washington and his wife put on to, uh, raise awareness of sickle cells and help out with scholarships. The young lady that got that scholarship, she was, uh, the doctors told her that she may not live to be eighteen years old, and the young lady has a, uh, bachelor's degree and working on her master's degree, and he was able to give her a thousand-dollar scholarship, and I think that was good. And she's going into health field too, so that's beautiful. Um, another thing that's, uh, bothered me, and I'm sure it's bothering the rest of the people, the citizens in the City of Saginaw, and that's the youth, the way with youth that we have in the City of Saginaw doing negative things and make our city look bad, and we're going to ask everybody again, like I'm going to do at least every other week, is to engage our youth. You'd be surprised on a small act of kindness that you can give to a youth, and the big smile that it may put in their heart later on and make them think about something else before they actually act on it. Uh, one thing I found out about an act of kindness, not only do it make my heart big, but it makes the receiver big too, you know, it, it softens their heart, a lot of these kids are hard because of the way life has treated them, and they just need to be softened up a little bit more. And, and, and I can't think of any better way to do that than to engage them. You'd be surprised on how these kids respond once you engage them. I'm looking forward to, uh, getting with the mayor and the rest of the city council and other citizens of the City of Saginaw for our cleanup this week, so I'm really looking forward to that. Uh, and today, we had a delegation from Ghana come here today to the, uh, Saginaw Youth Development Corporation, and they want to do the same thing that we doing with the, uh, youth in, in Ghana. So they came here and they tapped Eric Elkerson's brain and the rest of us and asked us questions about how we doing it, and they took a tour of our building, and they looking forward to, uh, partnering with us in Ghana to do the same thing with their youth. Uh, they're going to do a twist on this, where they're going to take, uh, a lot of people that's locked up in jail and do the same thing with the people that's locked up in jail, so hope they can give them some skills to be productive members in society, so, uh, that's all I got to share, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Saturday, eight o'clock, clean up the city. We will be doing five areas on the west side, five on the east side, and neighborhood associations are kicking in, and so we're actually cleaning up. For those people who had comments or spoke about cleanup, I've been talking about it, so now it is coming into fruition. At eight o'clock, we will meet here, and we will provide a light, light, not no pancakes and eggs, we will have a light brunch, breakfast for you, and then when you come back, we're only going to be out for two hours, when you come back, we're going to have hot dogs, chips, and water, um, and it's free, okay? So you don't have to pay thirty dollars, Councilman I Stash, you gotta pay thirty dollars, this one is free. Um, and I'm asking all community people to come out and please help us. I attended the Cinco de Mayo, I didn't walk, I was a vendor, I worked for my granddaughter this weekend, and it really was a nice affair, the wind was high, but it was a nice affair. Um, and one of the things that one of the, a couple people came up to me and was telling me, why can't we have something at Joy Park every weekend? And I said, because we got to learn how to act. Okay, when we learn how to appreciate stuff, we can get stuff. There was no type of arguing, anything going on, and the place was full. It was full. I mean, I looked and I'm like, oh, this is a lot of people. So, if we really want our city to grow, you're right, Councilman I Stash, we got to take it back, all the, all of the council understand, it's time to take our city back, and the only way we going to take it back is we got to work together. If we can't work together, we not going to do this. Together we stand, divided we fall. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, next, uh, item on our agenda is reports from the city manager.
Thank you. Uh, first, I had invited Renee Johnston, who's the chair of the ARPA Advisory Committee, to, um, give an update from the committee, so I see she's here, and she can step up to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, members of city council, Mayor Moore, Mayor Pro Ten Balls, and Manager Morales. My name is Renee Johnston, I'm with the Saginaw Community Foundation, but this evening I am wearing my City of Saginaw ARPA Advisory Committee hat. Um, thank you for allowing me to come here this evening to just give you a very quick update. Um, first of all, let me just say hats off to all of you for agreeing to hire Guide House to help facilitate this process. Um, they definitely have offered up some, uh, validity to the overall process, and, um, have really brought the committee together, um, to work cohesively. Let me also say that the members that were chosen to serve on this committee, um, are all very committed individuals, they very much care about their responsibility in serving on this committee, and are all doing a very fine job. Let me just say that we have met, as a committee, we've met four times, um, a fifth time will be this Thursday, and over those four meetings, um, the first one being a, a quick introduction by Guide House as to, um, how the ARPA, uh, dollars can be utilized, and then getting to, uh, to know the other members of the committee. Uh, the next meeting was to focus, uh, specifically on the five priority areas that city council identified. So we were educated on those, um, those five priority areas, and then we were asked to, um, break them down even more, um, so that we know exactly what might fit under each of those five priority areas. Uh, the next meeting after that, we reviewed that breakdown, um, and then we wanted to make sure that we didn't have any missing gaps, just to make sure that we clearly are looking at all the areas that might fit under each of those priority areas. And then our fourth meeting, um, first of all, we spent time with, uh, Dr. Ramon Roberts, we invited him to come and speak with us, so that we were educated in how they were using their Uster dollars, to see how, um, they were going to address education, being that education was definitely an area that came up in some of our conversations, so we thought it would be wise for us to know how the school district is going, going to consider using some of their dollars, um, mainly so we could see, um, how we would not utilize some of our dollars to support education, but more importantly, how we might be able to leverage both dollars, the Uster dollars as well as ARPA dollars to support education. And then with the remaining time of that meeting, we, was used for Guide House to train members of the committee as to how we were going to take the ARPA proposal process on the road. So you have to know that we have identified, each committee member has identified a handful of venues that we will take this ARPA process presentation throughout the community or throughout the City of Saginaw, with the goal of making sure that every resident in the City of Saginaw is familiar with the process and feels as though that they can partake in the process. And so, in fact, I've had three of those meetings, one of them this evening at, um, Unity in the Community Neighborhood Association. You have to know that, um, the process, we want to make sure people feel is easy to complete, um, the, uh, of course, there is a portal, um, that can be found on saginaw-mi-dot-com. Um, there is the application that will be found on that website, but we also have paper copies of that application. So people can, uh, as we take this presentation on the road, we can provide paper copies, um, and, uh, people can utilize that venue, but we are definitely encouraging people to consider the online portal to submit their applications. But the key to this process, once again, is that every city resident feels as though they can partake in the process. The application allows for basic ideas, so there are ten basic questions, most of them are just asking for contact information, because we want to make sure that we, as committee members, as we review these proposals and ideas, we have a way to reach out if we need clarifying information. So that's, uh, half of the first section of the application, the, the rest of the application is just asking for basic information of the idea, so not a full-blown proposal in that sense, but an idea. The second half of the application does allow for people that want to provide full budgets and full proposals, and therefore they can, um, they can attach a document that has a full-blown proposal. I want to address that in a second, because I know everybody's aware of the fact that, um, when we earlier announced that projects would be accepted by, um, city council, we, we did reach out to those individuals that had already submitted proposals, and a representative from Guide House and myself met with twenty-five of those individuals last Friday to make sure that they were fully aware as to how they resubmit their proposals on the portal. And you have to know that every mem, member of this committee is equipped and ready to help, uh, any resident, including those that already submitted proposals, we want to help anybody that doesn't feel comfortable or confident in how they submit those proposal, so we are equipped to do that. The deadline, as you may know, to submit all proposals and ideas is May thirty-first. Once we, um, receive those proposals, Guide House will help us put each of those ideas and proposals, uh, under each of those priority areas, and then at that point in time, the committee will then review all that information and prepare to give a proposal to city council for you to consider. I think I've covered everything, do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions?
I got one question.
Yes.
How did, uh, they, you guys contacted twenty-five people that had previous put-in applications?
We, more than twenty-five, we contacted everybody that we had proposals for.
Okay, okay, good.
We had twenty-five of them that actually attended the meeting on Friday.
Okay, good.
So there will be no-
Yes, Mr. Copeland, you can speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you, Mayor Moore. Wait, Mayor Moore, may I address our-
Yes, you may.
Our manager speaker.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Um, will there not be the presentation portion, it would just be the portal, and then you all review, and then it comes to us for recommendations?
There is not a presentation portion. Once again, if we have, if we need any clarifying information, we will contact the contact person for those proposals.
Thank you.
Any questions on this thing?
I just want to thank the committee for doing the fine work, because, uh, the city council couldn't do it all, but we're going to appreciate you guys bringing your proposals back to us, you know, because you guys are doing some investigation and taking a good look at them, we appreciate that.
Well, thank you, and I want you all to know that even though there's some public comments at the committee meetings, that people wonder why it's taking a long time, but even in the third, uh, educational sessions that I've done over the past week, um, we've gotten a lot of compliments. You have to know that this process is a good process, and people are starting to really recognize why we were taking the steps that we were doing, so thank you.
Yes.
Quick comment, Mayor, thank you. So Renee, I've attended two of the, I've, I've attended a couple of the meetings, and I missed the last one because I was out of town, but I do plan to come in again, and I encourage my colleagues, it's really good to come and watch the meeting take place. It's, was fascinating to watch the interaction, there's fifteen members in that committee, watch David do what he does, uh, it, it can kind of go off a little bit, but then David knows just how to bring it back, and then he'll also say we're going to address that in a few slides. It's, it's really been good for me to see this whole thing lay out, so thank you, thank you, you guys are doing a great job.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Um, where are the meetings posted? So the community, where can I get that information?
So it's on the website, so where you've, where the portal is, there's another page that has, um, the meetings.
The portal website, not the city website.
The portal website, correct.
They're on the city website.
And the city website as well, yes.
And clerk's office.
Perfect, thank you.
And please note that there are public meetings as well as not, non-public meetings, so, um, and by non-public, there could be some organizations that are using board meetings for some of those sessions.
Any more questions?
Just, uh, thank you, just a quick question for, or just actually a quick comment, actually, because you mentioned the city website, if you have access to the internet and you can go to the city website, under the ARPA tab, there is a ton of information, including their minutes and things that they're going over, thank you, that's all I have. Thank you, that's all I have.
Yes.
Thank you. What are, what is being done in regards to, uh, making sure, uh, or trying to, attempt to make sure that persons that, um, don't have computers or the wherewithal, uh, to find these meetings? What other avenues are you all taking to be sure that people that are not, uh, computer savvy, et cetera, may get this information and know about what's going on in these meetings?
So you have to know that each of these committee members were told upfront that we have a responsibility to make sure we represent the voice of the community. So I know there've been a couple of times where we've questioned whether or not we've engaged everybody or every resident. That is upon us. If we think that there is somebody, or if we know of a, whether it's a neighborhood or a group of individuals that are not informed, it's on us to make sure that they are. As well as, in fact, the, at the Unity in the Community Neighborhood Association meeting, I, what I more or less said, if you need help putting this information in the portal or even filling out the paper form, I, myself, as a committee member, would help out with that process. So that really is on us to make sure that individuals are aware and can complete the process and know where the meetings are.
So how are you doing that? That's what my question would be, how? So were you just saying just word of mouth?
Word of mouth.
Like yourself would tell people in your neighborhood, or?
Definitely.
Okay. And you spoke about the private meetings. How private are those meetings?
Like I said, uh, for example, Covenant, um, two of us are on the Covenant Board, so Covenant Board meetings are not public meetings, so, but we were using that as an audience to make sure that they are aware, because there are individuals on that board that live in the City of Saginaw or may have activities that could benefit the City of Saginaw that they may be interested in submitting a proposal, or they may know of other people. Once again, that word of mouth, they may know of people that need to be aware of the process, and they can help share that information. So we're using all venues, whether public or private, to make sure we're sharing this information.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Johnston, I thank you.
Thank you.
Because I kept hearing, and I haven't been to the meetings because I trust you guys. The worst thing in the world is to oversee something that you put out there. So for me, I trust you, I trust Guide House. No more questions. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Renee, and, uh, thanks to all the committee members for doing the work. And if you haven't gone to the, any of the meetings, I, I do encourage you. They're very efficient. They have had their time set up and their schedule, and they get through it in a timely manner. And I know, as Renee mentioned, they've already done several, uh, meetings out in the community, and, uh, we do have, uh, the portal questions and application, in paper format, and we have it in Spanish as well. So it's available in both of those formats. And, um, just to show how the committee is, is taking their role in evaluating everything. If you recall, uh, several meetings ago, we talked about city projects that, um, are potentially ARPA-funded. Um, we're going, the city is going to present to the committee as well, so they would, uh, the, the meeting on May nineteenth, city department heads will be talking about the projects that were on that list. Um, we're not going through the portal, but we are presenting. But, uh, we also encourage, um, anybody to submit ideas. So council members, I know a few of you have talked to me about ideas in particular that can be put in, into, uh, you can put those into the portal as well. And, um, if you haven't had a chance to look at those questions, that was a good collaborative effort because the, the committee and Guide House and city staff worked on that, and that online entry was, again, developed by our technical services staff. So, uh, the ability that technical services has to do that programming has really helped us, um, through a lot of this process as well, and, and really saves us money in the long run. So, um, we'll be, uh, at that meeting on the nineteenth, and several department heads will be there. So this, uh, we do have another presentation, uh, this evening as well. And, uh, first, I wanna thank, um, Ms. Jones, Director of Office of Management and Budget, and her staff for putting together the budget. Once again, it is quite an effort to balance everything with all of our funds and the resources that we have coming in. And, uh, I know most of you know, but this is a five or six-month effort that they go through beginning in late December, early January, if not before that. So Yolanda?
Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, and City Manager Morales. Um, tonight, we'd like to give you a quick overview of the fiscal year twenty-three budget, as well as review, um, with you the budget schedule. With me tonight, I have Charlene Orange. She's our new addition. She's the budget analyst for the department. So just to go over the, the schedule, on April twenty-fifth, you receive electronic, uh, email with the budget document included. And then on May sixth, you received, um, the presentation, not only from myself, but from Phil Carwatt on rubbish fund, streets, not streets, but water and sewer. So going forward, um, tonight is our first session to discuss the, uh, budget. We plan on having a public hearing on the twenty-third with adoption on the twenty-third. Um, this information is available here at the city in the City Clerk's Office, but it's also, will be online after tonight at our city's website at saginaw-my.com. Um, it, emails or citizen comments can be directed to myself. Uh, my phone number is listed, nine-eight-nine-seven-five-nine-one-seventy-four, or you can email me at yjones@saginaw-my.com. So, let's talk about the budget. So I know that the budget is kinda overwhelming. Um, if you look at the budget overview on pages thirty-one through fifty-nine, it will provide you a summary of all their funds and the changes to the city. Um, this budget continues to reflect, um, our, uh, commitment to quality services to the residents, to everyone, by preserving the organization's long-term financial goals. Um, the total citywide budget is projected to be a hundred and thirty-four-point-one million dollars. Um, this is basically one-point-seven-million-dollar increase or roughly one percent increase from the previous year. The largest increase will be realized in your water, um, operation and maintenance funds by three-point-two million, or about nine percent, due to the allocation of the twenty-twenty-one, uh, Water Supply System revenue bonds. Um, these, uh, monies will be used for planned construction projects and equipment. We will also see increases in personnel complement, and this is due to, uh, new additions, or new positions that will be as much needed for the city that will be added to the budget, as well as restructuring the Process System Control Division within the water and sewer funds. We will see a four percent overall increase to active healthcare, and there will be a slight increase to retiree healthcare. However, this will be offset by the utilization of our Medicare Advantage program during the fiscal year. Um, there will be a three-million-dollar increase to our pension obligation citywide for fiscal year twenty-three. And so just to give you a little information, during fiscal year twenty-two, um, the city re-amateurized our pension assets, which resulted in a stabilization of our portfolio, and that, that was giving it a level effect for the assets. And so annually, we will be budgeting nineteen million dollars for pension for the next twenty-five years. The addition of the American Rescue Plan Act funds were added, and, which is basically a carryover of what you've already approved in this fiscal year. We also will see increases to technical services IS and GIS, and these increases are related to the computer software as well as training and development. The city will also realize increases in the self-insurance fund, in the workers' comp fund, and this is due to increases to insurance rate nationwide. What the budget does not reflect is the recently council-approved collective bargaining agreement changes. The budget does reflect normal step and longevity increases. A budget adjustment will be completed on, around July first to recognize these change in the collective bargaining agreement. The general fund for fiscal year twenty-three will be roughly thirty-eight-point-seven-five million, and this is a nine-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand increase from the previous year. Um, non-general fund does make up seventy-one percent of the total citywide budget. So what I wanted to also show, and you've seen it in the bigger presentation, as the, over the last five years, you're seeing a, steady increase to not only the general fund, but also citywide. There's a couple of challenges that are facing the city, some are good, some are bad. Um, one of the challenges that we're facing and have been discussed quite a bit is our water and sewer lead and copper galvanizing line replacement. And the fiscal year twenty-three proposed budget continues to address funding for both water and sewer operations for the replacement of lead and copper galvanizing lines. This is a challenging project, but the city will continue to evaluate the water and wastewater infrastructure and address these issues proactively. Other post-employee benefits, known as OPEB, and pension liabilities also still has an effect on us. Um, funding for OPEB and pension remains a major concern for the city, and the budget continues to address funding of these liabilities. The fiscal year twenty-three budget allocates funds towards both obligations. And it should be pointed out, again, during fiscal year twenty-two, the city did re-amateurize the pension assets. I also bring up the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um, the city administration, city council, and the council and the ARPA Advisory Committee continues to work through the process of allocating funds to the city council ARPA goals and objectives, which are youth and family, neighborhood preservation and beautification, health initiatives, economic development, and housing. The allocation of these funds will remain a priority for review and approval during fiscal year twenty-three. It's anticipated the allocation and spending of these funds will begin within this fiscal year. Keeping in mind that all funds must be obligated by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four and expended by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six. So I'm gonna move on to showing, looking at the total budget from a resource allocation. Again, this is a hundred-and-thirty-four-point-one-million-dollar budget, and the pie chart represents how much of each fund type makes up it. The general fund represents roughly twenty-nine percent. Special revenue funds represents roughly eighteen percent. The largest part of the budget is represented within the enterprise fund of roughly forty-seven percent. And then internal service funds represents roughly six percent, and then the fiduciary funds is less than one percent. So let's look at the budget from the fund type. Again, the funds accounting for, uh, the general fund accounts for basically twenty-nine percent of the total citywide budget. And as previously mentioned, the tw, the general fund is approximately thirty-eight-point-seven-four mil, seven-five million, and this, again, is an increase of nine-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. So the question is, why did it go up? So we have the addition of a grant administrator to the office of the city manager, which is offset by revenues, uh, grant revenues that we still are receiving. We have the, uh, additional funds added to the election division for we have upcoming elections for fiscal year twenty-three. Employment agency, agency fees go up for O M B for the assistance to the department for various projects, as well as this individual working with the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation. In the fire department, we add a deputy fire marshal, as well as we're in, we're seeing, like, various increases in departmental supplies, insurance, information management charges. Utilities across the board is going up. Fuel is going up, um, dues, or repairs to the various stations. In the Department of Neighborhood Services, we have lease payments for the leased vehicles that we have. And the Department of Public Services funds were, um, required for the Michigan Ford buyback program. So we've brought a couple council communications to you with regards to purchasing vehicles, and then selling them back to the Ford, and then buying them again. So we're, we're getting the money from the, uh, Ford and then repurchasing the vehicle. So that's within the budget and is also a revenue source. Another part of the increase in this department will be realized in the debt service payments on various equipments and vehicles that are part of the various installment contracts that we have. In other general fund expenditures, there's an appropriation of, uh, debt service payments for the Saginaw County Drain Assessment. That's something new for this year. And then we have a higher appropriation for retiree healthcare. To offset some of these increases will be reductions in, in the, um, other general fund expenditures will be a reduction to the allocation from the general fund to unfunded liabilities, a reduction in the amount allocated for unemployment in the Saginaw Housing Commission healthcare contribution. And the Department of Neighborhood Services, you're gonna see a decrease in the professional services because we're completing the master plan. In community public safety, police, and fire, a, you'll see a decrease in their capital outlay due to the departments not allocating funds from the Rutledge Trust Fund. So we, last year, we had budgeted to use restricted fund balance for the Rutledge Trust Fund. We're not doing that this year. Moving on to the special revenue funds. Special revenue funds account for proceeds from specific revenue sources that are legally restricted to expenditures for si, for specific purposes. Again, this fund type equates about eighteen percent of the total citywide budget. And that actually, uh, is projected to be twenty-four-point-three-four million or one-point-six-million-dollar reduction, or about six percent reduction from the previous year. And so, looking at this fund, the special revenue funds, these, this is largely due to, and there's multiple reasons, but the major and local street funds, they're decreasing because our gas and weight tax monies decreased due to our population. So that, we, that's something that we had talked about before, that your state shared revenues and gas and weight would be affected due to our population decrease.
Yep.
The rubbish collection fund decreases because of planned capital purchases. Our downtown development authority two thou, uh, or DDA two thousand and eleven, we see a decrease due to a projected decrease in, uh, property tax revenues or personal property tax revenues, as well as the use of fund balance. Police justice grant, it is completed in fiscal year twenty-three. And again, the larger presentation outlines, like, the different changes. Um, the coronavirus emergency supplemental fund also decreases because the grant is completed in fiscal year twenty-two. Community development block grant decreases as a result of a reduction to the Allocation for Cares Act. So we have, we only had a couple of years to spend that money, and we're in the process of spending it, so we're seeing a decrease in our budget. The block grant home program, it decreases in the funds allocated for grants disbursement. And then the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation, it decreases because they use, uh, they're using less fund balance. These reductions are offset by increases, though. We're seeing an increase in the Public Safety Milage Fund, and this is due to an increase in real property revenue. CDPG residential loans is an increase as a result of the additional funds that are, that are being allocated for the city's housing rehabilitation program. And the addition of the American Rescue Plan Act, like I said, in fiscal year twenty-three budget reflects the allocation of eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. And this allocation represents a carryover of council-approved funds from the current fiscal year into the next year. And these were allocated for administrative costs as well as the contract with Guide House. The next fund type is our enterprise funds. Our enterprise funds account for services provided to the general public on a user-charge basis. Again, this fund type represents forty-seven percent of the total citywide budget. Enterprise funds for fiscal year twenty-three is projected to be sixty-two-point-nine-six, or nine-six million dollars rounded, and this represents two-point-three-million-dollar increase or roughly four percent increase. The increase in the, um, enterprise funds is largely due to the three-point-two-million-dollar increase to the water operation and maintenance funds. And again, as previously stated, this is due to, uh, to, uh, various reasons, but largely for the use of the twenty-twenty-one revenue supply bond. And they're gonna be allocating those monies towards engineering services, cleaning supplies, insurance costs, computer software, parts and supplies, and our process system control, fuel, street and road materials, professional services for our paving patching, chemicals. Chemicals also went up significantly this year. That's affecting us into the next year. Utilities and our water and sewer costs. Again, on the revenue side, you're gonna see an appropriation of the bond proceeds for the use of the bond. Furthermore, what you're also gonna see in the budget is the restructuring of the Process System Control Division in both water and sewer, under the depart, to go under the Department of Technical Services. Within the restructuring, the Instrumentation and Control Administrator will be reclassified to the Assistant Director Instrument Control Administrator. So that person will be reporting under Technical Services, as well as the Instrument and Control Technicians One and Two to an Instrument Control Specialist. So those two positions, those positions have been reclassified, and now are specialists, and they too will be reporting directly to the Department of Technical Services. and they too will be reporting directly to the Department of Technical Services. To offset this increase in this fund type is a reduction to the sewer operation and maintenance fund, about roughly $910,000. And again, this decrease is due to planned capital purchases and debt service payments. Moving on to the next fund type is our internal service funds. Our internal service funds accounts for goods and services provided to one department by another on a cost reimbursement basis. And again, this represents 6% of the total citywide budget. Internal service fund for fiscal year 23 is projected to be 8.02 million or an increase of $74,000 from the approved 22 budget. This net increase in internal, in these internal service funds is largely due to, we see increases in technical services GIA's for training and development, as well as software, and increase to technical services IAS due to, to the purchase of computer software, as well as the restructuring of the department with the process system controls from water and sewer. And so with that, there's a reclassification of the assistant director of technical services to the assistant director system administrator. So you're just changing titles, and those, both the two positions assistant directors are kind of on a level. You'll also see increases in the motor pool operation funds as it relates to increasing charge for services, as well as recognizing revenues from the Michigan Ford buyback replacement program. So we did this program in different funds, and you're actually seeing it throughout the budget. And as I previously mentioned, the self-insurance fund and the workers' comp fund increased significantly due to increasing insurance rates in the national market as a result of the nationwide economic conditions. So those, those two funds were affected this year. And they're affecting not only that, next year, but in the current year. To offset these increases, you will see reductions in the public works building as a result of the restructuring of the facilities department and Department of Public Services. That happened in the current year. That's what we budgeted for the current year restructuring of it, as well as a reduction in the radio operation funds. So the city has been putting money for maintenance and replacement to fund this, this radio fund. We are no longer, we have already met our goal, per se, on purchasing radios or new system, so we're no longer charging for replacement. So the only thing you're having is just the maintenance side. The last fund type we have is our, called our fiduciary funds. Fiduciary funds accounts for the administration of property or assets that are owned by other entities besides the city. So this one represents less than 1% of the total citywide budget. For fiscal year 23, it's projected to be 34,910, and that's the same as it was for the current year. What makes up this fund is basically the cemetery endowment funds, and these funds are legally restricted resources, and our 25% of the cemetery revenues that we collect in the general fund, they are accounted in this fund. So these revenues can only be used for cemetery care purposes in accordance with the city So I know I just threw a lot of information at you, and I know that is, can be quite overwhelming. So like in past, I'm, we're, we understand that, and we're saying that we invite city council members to meet with us to discuss any of your questions and concerns that you may have. So if you want to set up a meeting, you can contact the city manager's office, and we can schedule a meeting for you to meet with us. So at this point, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Yes. I just want to say, Yolanda and your team, you are a award-winning team and very, very, very responsible fiscally. So I know there's a lot of people that play a part. I just want to say thank you because it takes a lot to cross the t's and not the i's and make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to do. So you never, you and your team, you, you never disappoint, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Yolanda, because I know probably after two or three days, I wouldn't see numbers. I'd see moon and stars. But I did have a couple questions. I have a lot of questions on way to, we can meet. But I kind of missed a little bit. If you could explain to me when you say something about Saginaw housing healthcare.
Okay, so the city went back in, I think it was 2004, in which Saginaw Housing Commission split from the city. And we had shared employees. So at that, anybody who retired from the Saginaw Housing Commission, the city pays a portion of their healthcare, retiree healthcare.
Okay. And my other question, when you speak of the two, well, the two places here, were you the fiduciary? So are those dollars combined into city dollars at all, or you're just responsible for disbursement of those dollars to these?
So the cemetery endowment funds, 25% of the general fund revenues that we collect for cemeteries is put over into the endowment funds. Those funds are normally just put into a savings account, and we really can't do anything with it. It's just there. We have to, it's required to be there by city charter. So that's, that's really what, what's going on with that.
Okay. So any other questions, I'll save them. Thank you so very much for you and your team's hard work.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm sorry. The enterprise funds, how are we, are you guys, the rates going up any because of gas prices and the way the economy is right now? Are we reflecting that with the people who, our customers, who we sell our water to? Nah.
We're, we're doing a rate study right now. I think they're doing wholesale rate study, I believe, at the same time as they do in-city rate study. So that, as you know, it runs behind, though. We're looking at actual expenditures. They're, they're, I'm sure in their calculations, they do have a way to put in some of those estimates.
Do we, do we, do we charge our customers less than we, the city residents, the people in the city?
Well, we don't charge a, we charge a wholesale rate. So what's built into that rate is not, it's not all of the same things that are built into the city rate. So for instance, maintenance and service division is primarily providing service to our residents, because they're taking care of the in-city lines, similar to the lead and copper project. That's only in the city. We don't do that outside of the city. So plant operations, water costs, that kind of thing is included in the wholesale rate study. When we get the next information, we can have the consultant come to council and give a presentation about what goes into both the in-city rates and the wholesale rates.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yolanda, as always, great job. Gee, for you and your team. And along with the city manager, great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Yolanda. And with us, Yolanda did mention the water fund a few times, and Mayor Protonballs did ask some questions about that. So I do want to give you an update on some of the issues there. One issue is, is we do have rising costs, like you said, for fuel, but we also have a scarcity of chemicals that we utilize for treating water, and those prices have been going up. So we're trying to, to see how we can deal with that, but we also have our issue with delinquencies. So as you're aware, we haven't shut off water for over two years. We had the moratorium that was required by the state. That expired. I think we started doing shut offs for probably a month or less, and then we, we paused that. We've been paused since. So, and in July of 2021, we had delinquency of $1 million in the water fund for collections. And that stayed at about $1 million throughout 2021. Currently, the delinquent balance has grown to 1.6 million dollars. And that is for about just 1,200 accounts. So that's somewhere around 6% of our customers. So 94% of our customers are paying within that 60-day window. However, we have that, that number of customers. We have about, I think, over 18,000 residential water customers. So at 1,200 accounts, it represents much of that 1.6 million dollar overage. So we do need to address that issue, and we are thinking that we do need to set a date where we go back to our normal operations, likely this summer. And we'll look at a number of things to do for that before, before we resume that, and looking at press releases to get the word out there, tagging to make sure people know what, where they stand, giving exemptions if you can provide a proof of application for assistance. There is still assistance out there from, from few organizations, so we'll try to put that information out there. I think the KC has, has funding available, and probably United Way still has funds available as well. So those are available for, for people to, to go in and make applications. Also, payment plans is another thing that we encourage people. We, we are finding and talking to finance director Lori Brown and with, from her staff down there, that there are other programs where you can get assistance that our citizens can't get because we don't do shut offs, because you have to, there are some state programs that you have to be in danger of being shut off. And so they're not eligible for some of those programs when they go to the state to ask about them. So there's some issues with that. But this delinquent amount, 1.6 million, it has to be paid. It's costs that are incurred, so some way we have to get those funds back, whether it's from assistance or people paying it, or it gets spread out. And I, I know, I know several of you, I'm sure, have been contacted by some of the other property owners, because we do hear a lot from the people who own rental, rental properties too, because that falls back on them if it's not paid. And we've had, we've had pressure from them for, since the moratorium expired. So I think we, once we'll get more information and get some date, proposed dates, and start putting information out there about that.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Okay, just for public clarity, 1.6 million delinquent, and it's 6% of the Saginaw population that has not paid that?
About 6%, it's over a 60-day period, so there are some people that are probably in that 1.6 million that maybe aren't, aren't over the 60 days. But yeah, 1,200 accounts, and we have about 18,000. So 10% would be 1,800, around 1,800 accounts.
Okay. Go ahead, because now you made me forget what I was going on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to make it harder. Okay. Two questions, I hope, in regards to the water. One is, can we not use any ARPA dollars in regards to that, or no?
Well, I mean...
Because I guess I was kind of going along thinking, you know, that some of those delinquent accounts would be, you know, the city would be made whole by some of the ARPA dollars.
But you could, you, you could, you could use ARPA dollars for utility assistance, but there's so much other assistance out there already. You could do other program, you should avail yourself of those other dollars out there so that you can do other projects in the city.
But I'm saying it is something that could be looked at possibly.
It is possible.
So we wouldn't be, okay. So my other one is, of course, they, well, I won't say that. I have gotten some calls that when persons have applied to get help, they were turned down because, for some reason, I guess they feel like there's a moratorium, and they can't get cut off, so some agencies are not helping. So is that wrong?
Nope. We've heard the same thing, because, because for some, some agencies to receive assistance, you have to be in danger of being, having your water utility shut off. And I think it depends on where you go, but some of them are saying the city isn't shutting water off, so you're not in danger of getting shut off, which...
So they have the dollars to help, but they're not helping because, okay.
I think, I think those are state dollars, so they probably likely would go to another community then.
Okay. All right. Thank you so very much.
Have you heard of any surrounding communities that are doing what we're doing as far as allowing two years off of paying or anything like that?
Not in our county. Not that I'm aware of, no.
Yes.
Mr. Manager, do you know if, I'm not, I'm familiar with the program out there, but Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund, that was for mortgages, utilities. I'm kind of wondering if these programs are kind of what we're talking about, where, because we're not shutting off, then they don't qualify. Does, do you know any of the programs that are? Not specifically which ones. They're always, even pre-COVID, there are dollars always available for utility assistance. I think it's, is it? Okay. Kind of a catch-22 right now. Some of the state agencies that even prior to COVID, there were, was funds, funding available for wat, to prevent water shut offs. Well, thank you for letting me know. I did not know that, that they were not able to qualify because of... Wait, we're set up right now. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Well, hopefully, we will get back to doing what we got to do to get the citizens to pay their water bills. I mean, that, that's the cheapest utility that we all have, and if we don't have no water, we can't, we got to have water for cooking, we got to have water for eating, we got to have water to flush the toilet. And I know it seems like people are taking advantage of the city right now because of that. And we got, the pundits come here and complain that we being cruel for leaving their water bills on, I mean, cutting the water off, but yet no one's paying their water bills. That don't make any sense. You know, so I think that we need to do what we need to do as a city to try to get our money to, to take care of this situation, because this, this is getting to be ridiculous. Going from 1.1 to 1.6 million, that's a half million dollar worth of water bills in one year, two years, year and a half. So I want, I would direct the city manager to do what he needs to do, so we can start getting it, even getting them notices, so they know their water get cut off, and then they can seek some assistance. And the pundits that's worried about people getting their water bills cut off, maybe they need to be the ones that assist them with getting the resources to get their water bills taken care of. Thank you.
You know, United Way is still yet taking application, along with Saginaw Community Action Center. We had them here before. I don't think we're going to do that again, but I know that we've got to do something because we're steady going backwards. So, United Way and Community Action Center, please, or stop in at the water department and make arrangements. We don't want to seem like we just want to cut you off, however, we got to do something.
Okay. And then one last thing I did want to mention, because as mentioned to me prior to the meeting, so we had our proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week, and we, we did invite the presidents for all five of our unions to come, but we neglect to have our non-union personnel represented. So we have our whole budget, our whole budget office is non-union, so it's not just department heads, it's our whole budget office, our whole HR office, our assistant directors, and our chiefs, and our, our police chief, our fire chief, and all the other department heads. And I'll tell you, there's never, never a time when I have a question about anything that's on a weekend or any time that those department heads or the chiefs are not getting me information, whether it's about fires, issues, police issues, or water main breaks, or water plant issues. So I wanted to, to give a recognition of those employees as well. So with that, that concludes the management update.
Any other questions? Any none? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next order of business is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV, channel 191. I need a motion, need a room for exception.
Come on.
It's been, it's been moved in support. Any exceptions? Any obsce, I'm sorry, any obsessions?
Obsessions?
Fast ones.
We, we got it.
We've lit a call for the vote. All those who pay, they should have probably saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at Boards, Commission, and Committee reports.
Do we have any board meetings that, at the Boards, Commission, that someone might will need to report on?
I will report on the airport board. We met a couple of weeks ago, and everything's going to be fine, is going fine out there. They've been looking for different carriers and stuff to expand, so I think the airport is doing real good out there right now, right? Okay. Even the chairman thinks so.
Anybody else? Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to report on the planning commission, I do sit on that with our Honorable Mayor and the planning commission, our city staff, Bob Galen and Cassie Miller from Saginaw Future, they did get us a draft copy of the master plan, so we've had a opportunity to, to take a look at that. And I did like what I saw.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at appointment of Board and Commission members.
I need a motion to approve one and two, need rooms for exceptions.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Madam Clerk.
We are now at ordinance introduction, and we do have one tonight, and it's an ordinance to amend Chapter ninety-five, Trees, Shrubs, and Plants of Title IX General Regulations by amending Section ninety-five point zero-three, Abatement of nuisances.
I need a motion to introduce.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. This ordinance will be laid over under the Charter provision. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at ordinance consideration adoption. Our first one is ordinance to amend the official city map to vacate entire blocks twelve, thirteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-four, and thirty-five, and fractional blocks of twenty-nine, twenty-six, twenty-one, eighteen, thirty-three, and thirty of Williams and Little's addition.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Madam Clerk.
Our second ordinance tonight is to amend Chapter one fifty-three zoning code of Title fifteen land usage by adding Section one fifty-three point five thirty-four definitions and amending Section one fifty-three point five thirty-seven Regulation of Structures, Section one fifty-three point five thirty-eight Historic District Commission, Section one fifty-three point five thirty-nine Procedure for Review of Plans, Section one fifty-three point five forty Appeals, Section one fifty-three five forty-one Establishing New Districts and Identifying Historic Resources, Modifying or Eliminating Existing Districts, and by adding Section one fifty-three point five forty-five Title Violation, Fine Payment of Cost, and Section one fifty-three point five forty-six Acquisition of Historic Resources.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support, any discussion? Here we go, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we're at miscellaneous business. We do have an item on here for a closed session discussing pending litigation in the Bradley case.
I need a motion to approve with, and I need a roll call. I'm sorry, I need, I need a roll call vote.
You need a motion.
I need a motion, then I need a roll call vote.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
We need a roll call vote on this.
Okay, okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache.
Yes.
Florence is absent, Councilmember Copeland.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Bench.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We have eight yes and one absent.
I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I need a motion.
I got it. Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the legal counsel recommendation as discussed in closed session regarding the Bradley case.
Support.
It's been moved in support, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Is there any other business?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any other business? Yes.
All right, so I'd like counsel to refer to the April twenty-sixth email from the city manager, but I have a motion, I move that we provide premium COVID hazard pay to the following city employees with the following guidelines as recommended. That the eligibility period be from March twenty-third, twenty-twenty, to March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, and based on two thousand eighty hours, employees who've worked five hundred nineteen hours or less receive twenty-five percent, five hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty-nine hours receive fifty percent, a thousand forty hours to fifteen, one thousand five hundred and sixty-nine hours receive seventy-five percent, and anyone over one thousand five hundred and seventy hours receive a hundred percent. So in summary, the motion would cover up to three thousand dollar max allocation, which totals eight hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in ARPA funds.
There's a motion on the floor, need a second.
I'll second.
It's been seconded, any discussion? You should have received this email some time ago from the city manager. He gave us three proposals.
Was this the lesser one?
It's the middle one.
It's the middle, midway.
And what was the less, what was the lesser one?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred?
Right. Then I think the other one.
Thirty-five.
Yeah. No discussion?
Yeah, is other cities doing this? I mean, how are we looking right now around the cities?
So mostly, there have been counties that have done this. Saginaw County did do it, similar amount of money, I think. They were prob, they were at thirty-seven fifty, I think. They're the only one in our region that I know of that, that did it, but it's real similar to this plan. They did a percentage, and everybody was paid the same. The other cities in, in the Great Lakes Bay region, Midland is not doing this. They have significantly less ARPA money. I think their total is about eight million. And Bay City has thirty-plus million, I think, and they, they are not doing it. I checked with their city manager, at this point, they're not providing hazard pay with ARPA funds. They did do, she stated, they did a different kind of a premium recently, though, with general fund money. We did check with Guide House, and I think, I think I sent that to council too, about, probably around ten percent of their clients that are doing it, but there are some other ones in process do.
So we call for the, yes?
And this is coming out of the twenty-five million that we've already set aside for a city?
No.
Well, I think we want to do it strategically. We're going to be meeting with Guide House about funding the different projects this, I think it's this week. So wherever it comes from, we can probably account for that when we provide you the information.
So right now, it's not coming out of the money that we already set aside?
It could, it could. We'll have to, I think when we do the reporting, we'll have to look at where, where we are with our spending and what, where it makes the most sense to come from with. I think in the long run, we would, we will have to set up a spending for all of the funds.
I'm still, so if we use up all of our twenty-five million for city projects, and we still approve this, it would then have to, if all of that money is used, this money we're setting aside now would then have to tap into the money that we have set aside for the community?
Remember, we, we reserved twenty-five million, that's an estimate. So right now, we know we have, I think, we just have the first two years, so that's not twenty-five million. So you're going to be taking roughly a million dollars out of that amount that's already accounted for, because we have to recalculate that every year. Probably that's where you would initially do it, but you're going to, over the long term of ARPA, you're going to have to, to balance that out to make sure that you do all the expenditures. That make sense? Just because of the...
Because I want to support it, I just don't want it coming back on us that it eventually comes out of the additional money and not the one that we set aside. That's the only, I, I support this move. I just want us to make sure that it comes out of the twenty-five million we've already approved and set aside, rather than the remaining amount that we've been sharing with the community that that would...
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, we can do that initially, it, but it is more complicated than that in the long term.
Got a motion on the floor.
Yep.
Look another question, Mayor.
Yes.
Just to kind of piggyback on what Councilman Copeland is saying, is that is exactly what I saw people talking about in the community, is they, when we start talking about the twenty-five million, even the premium pay they wanted to make, they said that money, they want to see that money into the community. So what, that's a good proposal that you're saying. Make sure it's out of that.
I'll tell you, I've received, since that, since I talked to council about it, I haven't received any about paying premium pay, period.
No.
It's, it's all been naked, but...
Exactly, that's what I've received, so that's why I want, I was, I was hoping that this could possibly just wait, because so far, I would think no other city was doing this, and I want to support those who work for the city, but at the same time...
Want to do it right.
I want to do it, because I, I believe we all deserve something, but at this point, I just...
Well, and that's part of the, part of the planning of the funds that I was talking about, one of the, we've been working with Guide House to make sure we're, I, I would commend council, because I know you've been more restrained about spending the funds, because it is a long planning process, and one of the things that we want to work with Guide House to do is to make sure that we leverage the funds properly, because there is a lot of other money coming in from the state of Michigan, so, and potentially some other places as well that have, for instance, part of ARPA, the Economic Development Administration, received a lot higher allocation than they have, and everyone's aware that we did submit requests for community projects to both of our centers. So we want to take that kind of approach, where we're looking at the long for, long-term planning of all of the funds, so where do you come from? Initially, I think you're probably right, Councilman Copeland, so if you're going to do it now, we'd probably report it out of the revenue loss portion of our funds. But, I mean, to, to clarify a little bit, I don't see funds coming from any other source for premium pay either. I don't think, I don't think the, the state is going to be doing any more of that for local units, from, from what we've seen. It would be more economic development type projects, or different things like that that could potent, or utility assistance, different things like that could be coming from this state. This category would have anything additional.
Yes, Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Do we have twenty, we got twenty-five million already?
Well, you, you made that commitment to reserve the revenue loss. We have two years of calculated, and I think it's about six million dollars a year, somewhere five, between five and six, so you have accounted for about twelve million.
Okay, so do we have that in the bank here, or somewhere? Are we drawing interest on that money?
Yeah, 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 so...
So what can we do with interest money?
With...
The reason why I'm asking, because the way I'm looking at it, the amount of money, eight hundred thousand dollars that we plan on, that we, if we give that money to the workers, it seem like we might be able to recoup that money with interest.
Not with the rates local government gets. We, we get, we get limited interest rates, but for interest, you can use, you can use the interest, I believe the rules say you can use it for anything. Same with program income, so if you look at long-term projects that you want to do, if there's some kind of low-interest loans or something, that becomes program income. But you could use interest revenue for pretty much anything. Government entities are very restricted on what we can invest in, because we're not allowed to put principal at risk in that manner, so you usually end up with CD-type rates, which I know Councilman Ostache can probably tell you what those rate, rates are at this point. They're not, they're not high, but, but we, we are allowed to, to gain interest from that.
So what I'm, what I'm trying to get see is, do we think we can recoup eight hundred thousand dollars within, by twenty-twenty-six, if we approve this today, with the amount of money that we got coming in? I'm wondering if you think we can recoup that eight hundred thousand in interest?
I, I don't think you'll get eight hundred thousand in interest from those funds.
Okay. Well, how much you think we're going to get? I mean, you a, you the math major?
In, interest from this, boy, the days that the city has received significant interest are pretty much long gone from...
Right.
To give you an idea, we typically do have cash in reserves of, in excess of thirty million dollars, but several years ago, we modified a lot of our accounts, because the fees, the banking fees are higher than the interest you're receiving. So we utilized sweep accounts and different methods to make sure we don't have banking fees.
Right.
And we kind of trade off that interest, but we have limited, and we have a number of investments or other funds, but it's not, nothing is, nothing is high interest that, that local governments can participate in. And I think once you guys, once council gets these recommendations that we're hoping to get from the committee in June, you'll be able to start pushing more of that money out into projects. But I, I meant to mention, mention this under management update, but if you go into the portal and you look at the ideas, a lot, anyone can put ideas into that portal, but one of the selections is the city is going to do it. Now, I don't know if we've communicated that to the committee, but, but we may, we may have limited capacity to do some of those, if it goes back on the city. But I think you, you'll be pushing more of those funds out in any case later this summer, so you won't want, you won't be sitting on those, that money for too long.
Yes, council on me.
So I'm kind of leaning toward very much so, Councilman Copeland, but if this vote was delayed, would that give us, would we have more, would we be able to say where those dollars would come from at a later date?
And you can say now, you, you can take it from revenue loss. I mean, you can designate that in your, your resolution if you want to. You'll just have to, in the reporting capacity, you want to make sure that you spend all of the money on time, so you want to make sure you're pulling it out of categories that are capable.
Okay.
That's, that's what I was, what I was getting at.
Okay, thank you.
Also, if you make, I think the motion was complete, but I would exclude the city manager and city council from that.
Of course. City council and city manager.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, that was the question I had sent to Tim after he sent the, the information out, was, you know, which portion it was going to come out of. And based on the public response that we saw, rightly or wrongly, I think when we set aside the twenty-five million for revenue loss, there was much, much of an attitude of, oh, well, they just paid themselves. And so I would, and it's not fair or right, but in voting for this, if we were to vote for this, I would definitely want it to come out of the lost revenue side, regardless of how much that complicates things. And I don't know if it would be appropriate to make a motion to amend, to include that in there, that the, that shouldn't be paid, it would come out of the revenue loss portion. But...
Is that a motion?
Yes, that is a motion.
I second that.
Let me just say this. I, I think everybody loses sight of what that money was for. The money was for the city, and so the city has got to recruit. Just because, and I've asked city manager Morales, if we don't spend our money, and it looks like the city doesn't spend their money, what would they do? The answer was, just like CBDG, they throw it in the pot, and the people who got money would get some... would get some more money, and hopefully they'll spend it. So I, I, I think we gotta keep that in mind, and we did do a resolution, which the amendment, I think, covers it now. So there's been, it's been moved and seconded. Which one do I go with, the last one? They added on.
We're discussing the amendment, but I wanna be clear on that amendment, does that also include the exclusion of the city manager?
Yes, and the city council.
And city council.
And council.
Are we voting?
So.
In a minute.
Are we voting now?
On the amendment.
Unless you have more discussion, that's up to council.
Clarification. Clarification, uh, in the email that we all received from the manager too, though, you also spoke of some of the programs that we actually did during the year for our staff, so there were, there was a additional 80 hours of pay that were added to, and I'm trying to remember the other, uh, thing that you all did. There was 40 hours of emergency leave bank for full-time city employ, employees, and whatever the normal weekly hours for part-time employees, and there was, um, public safety due to the state's, uh, classification, they were covered under workers' comp, so they didn't utilize leave time if they were ill due to COVID-19, so they didn't lose paid time off. We also created a expanded emergency leave bank, which allowed essential employees who had to work through stay-at-home order issued by the governor, to earn one hour of comp time for every hour that they worked, up to 80 hours between April 1st of 2020 and April 13th of 2020. That created additional leave time bank. Federal legislation required the city to provide up to 80 hours of additional paid leave time to non-public safety employees who missed work due to COVID-19, um, and then we did have, uh, grants for premium pay for public safety employees, police and fire only, and, uh, those employees had an option of keeping their emergency, expanded emergency leave bank, which is the, the comp time type bank, for receiving a thousand-hour hazard pay stipend, and, um, some employees chose to keep the hours, some employees took the, the hazard.
Did you say a thousand hours?
It was a thousand dollars, yeah.
Oh, a thousand hours, I said thousand hours.
Yeah, a thousand dollars. Thousand dollars. And then we did have, um, the federal government had a, expanded FMLA, FMLA time, which paid employees 80% of their pay if they had a medical condition or stayed home for someone with a medical condition, or because they had to care for a dependent child due to school and daycare closures. So those are, those are all the items that we did do.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, do we go back with the second motion?
The amendment.
The amendment.
The amendment only.
Okay, the amendment only, it's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Is there any other business?
You got your main motion now to deal with.
We're going back to our main motion.
As amended.
As amended. It's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Is there any other business? Hearing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close them. Yes, nay?